Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 4th, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, ever created and eternal.
Okay. Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we just want to thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us. Father, we pray for our new hospital and for Duke. And we just pray, Lord, that our citizens will get the best care possible. Father, we want to pray also for the faith-based groups that are helping in our prison. And we thank you for all their efforts and for the success they've had in getting grant funding. And, Lord, we just pray for them and pray for that project. Lord, we want to remember our law enforcement and our EMS and those that keep us safe. We'll remember our military. We pray that you keep them safe and bring them home safely. We also want to pray for their families. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
Before we move on, I would like, I'm sure most people now know, but the hospital sale did close this past Thursday. So Duke Life Point is the owner at this point and is operating the hospital. And I noticed that some signs have already changed out there. So things are moving rapidly. And as Kevin said, we wish them all the luck and partnership with the county for anything we can do moving forward. And the Ty Pennington reuse project for the old state prison was awarded to Haywood County at $50,000 and a lot of national publicity for our county, very positive. And I guess there'll be a team come in for some assistance on that project here in the next few weeks. So congratulations to all those who worked so hard to make that happen. Okay, we'll move to our public comments session. Mr. Miller.
We met with Doris, Dr. Doris Hammett, last Thursday to discuss the funding formula. She's a delightful person, 90 years old and sharp as a tack. The next day, Friday, she sent an email to Chuck Francis, Chairman of the Haywood County Board of Education. She copied the entire Board of Education and sent an additional copy, email copy, to all of you, the elected Board of County Commissioners. Since all of you received this email, I'm going to read her email now for the benefit of the citizens of Haywood County here in this courtroom and for those watching this video. Dear Mr. Francis, my meeting with Monroe Miller was interesting and informative. I found his figures documented and definitive. I found the use of the funding formula historically unreliable. And if it is to continue to be used, the funding compared with this year's increase per pupil of 2.33 percent, next year, 2014 through 15, will be .089 percent. Social Security COLA is 1.5 percent. This year's increase does not cover the needs of our Haywood County students to give each child the opportunity to develop his or her capabilities to the full extent. My position is that every individual, business, community, organization, and church has a responsibility to see that our schools have this funding. This responsibility begins with the Haywood County Commissioners and the Board of Education. Our elected officials must resolve the problems with this funding formula for our school system. I cannot pass the responsibility of inadequate funding to the federal and state governments, although we share a part of the funding difficulty. I will continue to work with our students in the many ways available, but I cannot ask individuals, business, organizations, communities, or churches to do so until our elected leaders understand and resolve the problem of the funding formula. I shall delete the topic on our agenda for the upcoming conference with the Foundation on Excellence in Education, August 7. I cannot ask the support of the Board of Education for solicitation of the community until the concern of the funding formula is resolved. The community needs the leadership of the Commissioners and the Board of Education. Doris B. Hammett, M.D. Your call, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll move to constituent concerns. Bill?
You've mentioned, well, concerns and two things we're happy about. The hospital, I think it was 12:01 Friday morning, they changed over. And the prison unit being converted and went into, what, the $50,000? So that's two of the more positive things, probably the most positive thing in the county in the last few years.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Just along those lines, I know the folks that are working on the old prison are very excited about winning that challenge. And I'm always amazed how many people in the county that we have, the ideas that they come up with and how they work, how they work hard in the nonprofits. And I don't know who even thought to look that up, but I just tip my hat to them because that'll definitely give us some more momentum in getting that project on its feet and getting the old prison to be, you know, a real positive force in our community instead of, you know, it's been there for decades and has just been, you know, a prison. So now it's going to be somewhere where people can have some hope. And so I just appreciate all the people that have been working on that.
Michael?
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay. Okay, we have an administrative and agency report this morning from the Southwestern Commission Region A, Ryan Sherby, the executive director, is with us. And Sarah Jane Melton.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff council. With me this morning is Sarah Jane Melton, our Area Agency on Aging Director. I need to be brief here. I just want to cover a few projects that we have been working on in Haywood County. You have our list of services in your agenda packet, so I won't go into those details. And I have not read the front page of the newspaper this morning, but we have been working with Evergreen Packaging on job profiling. Since we administer workforce investment funds on behalf of the federal government, we go in and we help profile positions so that they hire the right person the first time. This is a service that industry has found to be very valuable, especially when it takes time to get folks up to speed before they can perform that position. Another project we've been working on for 30 years is our revolving loan fund. We have approximately $1.3 million to loan out to local businesses that will create jobs. Within the last three months, we have loaned about $325,000 of that to Haywood County businesses with an anticipated job creation number of about 22 commitment in the next two years. Over the life of this program, we have loaned Haywood businesses about $1.5 million, creating about 175 jobs and retaining about 59. We also do a lot of facilitation services. We've been working to ensure that the EDC chamber transition has gone smoothly. We're helping the chamber now with a strategic plan. We offer general facilitation services that's available to organization boards, et cetera. So before Sarah Jane talks a little bit about the Area Agency on Aging, our organization is owned by our local governments, the seven western counties, the 16, 17 towns, forget about Fontana, within. They are dues-paying members, 75 cents per capita with that money, which is about $150,000 a year total among all the local governments in western North Carolina. We leverage anywhere between $6 and $8 million per year into the region. We're a technical resource for our local governments. We are here to help with grants, infrastructure management, whatever your need may be. So please call on us anytime we can be of service, and we appreciate your continued and ongoing support. And thank you, Commissioner Sorrells, for, you're typically the lead that attends the Southwestern Commission meetings, and that's appreciated. Sarah Jane?
Good morning.
Good morning.
At the Area Agency on Aging, we do a lot with older adults, and you all are aware of a lot of that. You are very strong supporters here in Haywood County of our older adults, as is known by the Senior Resource Center, which is a wonderful place for folks to come, as well as the new site for Maple Leaf Adult Respite, which is fabulous for folks who have dementia and need that kind of care. So we're very, very happy with that arrangement. We also have a flow-through for the congregant and the home-delivered meals, as well as the in-home aid programs that are served in the county, transportation, and some other things. Within my office, we offer caregiver support, respite support for caregivers. Over 50% of caregivers die before the person they're caring for. So that's a very strong percentage, and folks that need some assistance and aren't always willing and/or able to ask for help at that point, so we try to help with that. We also have an ombudsman who comes into your nursing homes and your adult care homes that provides assistance with areas of complaints to try and make their lives better, as well as some technical assistance and things like that that we do from our office. We'd be glad to help in any way we can. Through the Block Grant Committee, we work hand-in-hand with some of your local citizens in making sure that that funding is gotten to the right places. So we'd be glad to help in any way we can, and we appreciate y'all very much.
Appreciate you acknowledging the Senior Resource Center and some of the other programs we have for our elderly residents. We're very proud of what we're able to do in that regard, and especially considering the demographics in Haywood County. We're gray and we're getting grayer, and it's good to have those kinds of services available.
Thank you. I'll leave you with our annual report. Some of you may have already seen this, but I'll drop you a paper copy. My card's in there. Please call on me anytime. Thank you for the time.
And thank you, Ryan, for the, many services that you offer to Haywood County and our neighboring counties. It would cost a lot to contract with individual companies and concerns to accomplish the very things that you provide free of charge. So we thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. He wants to have any questions of Ryan?
I just, I've enjoyed being the representative to the Southwest Commission Board. It's very well-attended meetings, a lot of work, a lot of interest in western North Carolina or the seven western counties. And so, you know, I know before I was here, there was lots of help and support and everything that went to our county, not only the other counties, the western counties, but since I've been on there, it's continued. And we've had a change in the head. We went from Bill Gibson to Ryan Sherby, and Ryan's picked it up and kept moving it forward. So it's a good organization. Thank you.
Please call me anytime.
Okay, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any adjustment to the agenda today? Okay, we'll move then to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the July 21st, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? If not, we'll move to the second item. David Francis, our tax administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to congratulate you all and your team for the transition to Duke Life Point. Y'all should be very proud of that. I was especially proud not to see Duke underneath the sign yesterday that said Haywood Regional Medical Center and didn't say Duke underneath.
Temporary sign.
I was afraid you were going to break my heart there, so all my Duke friends are pretty happy about this as well, too. Before you, Commissioners, I want to discuss the 2013 settlement of taxes for Haywood County. Our real estate levy for the year was $36,879,000. 2013, the levy was $36,539,000. We had a $340,000 increase in the levy through construction, through additions. So there were some good news. It's not like we were before where we saw anywhere between $800,000 to $1 million between year to year, but we are coming back a little bit. Collection-wise, we, 2014, we collected $35,749,000, up from $35,387,000, an increase of .8. One of the good things that we saw this year was their bankruptcies. If you remember last year, I told you we peaked with bankruptcy filings. We'd never had a year as high as we had last year, which was $64,000. This year, our bankruptcy filings were around $25,000, which is about the average. And out of that $64,000 that were filed in bankruptcy last year, we're down to about $15,000 that remain unpaid for that year. So things are working through the system there and working out a lot better. And if you remember, when we talk about VTS, the Vehicle Tax System, or tax and tag, tag and tax, you hear it that way, you know, that started last year as well. The county did mail, from July through December, we did mail notices due to the delay in the implementation of the VTS system. So we still have collections that are coming through here as well. And then there's collections through VTS that Julie's office is handling, and has done a great job of handling those as well. Met with Kim Crawford several times, who works with Julie, has done a fantastic job in easy-to-read spreadsheets for me and everything, and we're able to see what's happened with VTS very well. So last year, we had collections of, or levy of $1.5 million in motor vehicle collects, or levy, and then what we received in collections is $1.3 million for roughly about 90.13% collection right there. VTS, now there's a little bit of noise in here because VTS, there was a four-month overlap the way the old system worked and this system worked. But overall, the VTS collection system collected $1.9 million. We have costs in there due to credit cards and debit cards and other fees that are associated with that, and with releases and refunds, about $88,000, for a total collection of $1.8 million from the VTS system. So overall, our motor vehicle collections were $3.2 million. Our delinquent collections for the year were $1,617,000, up about $15,000 from the previous year. Our occupancy tax, as you know, you all charged me a couple of years ago with collecting delinquent occupancy tax, we collected over $10,000 in occupancy tax. Our overall collection rate is 96.67%, an increase of .57%. So we're seeing things starting to head up. You know, a few years ago, we had unemployment north of 10%. Unemployment's coming down. People are able to pay their taxes. Listen, you know, growing up as a, you know, on a farm here, I learned to work with people. And, you know, and I pride myself in being able to work with about anybody. And anybody who's struggling or needs help, please come and see me, where we can work out things. The last thing that we ever want to do is foreclose, do any kind of forced action, but that's part of our job, and we'll continue to do that. We need to. So last year, we collected $46.7 million overall, when you take in the fire districts, the road districts, and the sanitation district, $46.7 million. And we were out of balance $7.70 for the whole year. So that's .00000164. So better mathematician can figure out the percentage of that. Any questions, Commissioners? That's my report.
Just sidelike, the Tag Office in Canton, is any possibilities that...
We have not heard anything from the state. It is, you know, put out there forbid. They did not have any applications for the Canton office. And I know that they're still looking. The Waynesville office is inundated for sure. Lines are long. I know they're working as hard as they can, but I've not heard of any hope that the Canton office will be opened back up yet this time.
Explain a little bit how that works, that it's not a government office, really.
Right. The Department of Motor Vehicles contracts their, the issuing of license plates and titles with individuals. There are some counties that do run state offices, but you have to contract with the Department of Motor Vehicles for that license plate agency. And it's not, it's, you know, it's one of the quasi-public-private partnerships, but you have to go through and be vetted, you know, to make sure that you're financially sound and able to run the office. And even if there is somebody that does receive the bid for the Canton office, it'll probably take six to eight weeks before it opens back up after they receive the bid, because it's a pretty extensive training program that you have to go to in Raleigh for that.
So if anyone is listening that would be interested in that, that possibility does exist for the Canton office, and you can, if you want to learn more about it, you could contact the DMV, and they can lead you from there.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for David?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time. Okay, next we have Julie Davis, our Finance Director, with a series of budget amendments. Julie? I'll just let her proceed through these. If you have any questions, just speak up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first four budget amendments, you have actually seen before. These are carryovers from prior years. This is, a couple of them federal, a couple of them state funding. So what we're doing is we're putting the amounts that were not spent by the end of June in the current year budget so we can finish them out. The first one is a community development. You'll remember this, Blue Ridge National Heritage. There's $336,341 that's left to spend. They may finish it up this year, but this is putting it in the budget. Revenue and expense are the same.
Okay.
The next one is economic development. This is, that was state. This is another state grant. This was a $15,000 grant, and there's $12,414 left to spend in this current fiscal year. The next grant is a, this is a federal grant. This is a community-defined solutions grant. It's been called the Arrest Grant. We've had it for a number of years. There's $46,206 left in this grant for spending in 2015.
All right.
And the next one, carryover again, this is a federal grant. This is Public Safety. There's $28,500 in this grant. This one, we just received in June, so most everything is being spent in the current fiscal year. And those are the carryover grants. This last one is Health and Human Services. This is a Maple Leaf Program grant, $21,717 for the Maple Leaf Adult Respite Program.
Okay. Any questions of Julie on the budget amendments? Thank you. The final item of the consent agenda is Health and Human Service Agency contracts. Ira Dove?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. These are a couple of more contracts for the Health and Human Service Agencies that would be valued at above $100, or above $50,000. The first, under 4A, is the Haywood Vocational Opportunities, a Job Development Services Contract. This comes from federal funding. This is connected to the Work First Program, and it opens up a number of slots that they will do job training, job development, and interviewing skills, which is part of providing the Work First Program, that we make these kinds of activities available to those citizens who would qualify for that program. So this allows us to deliver that program, and is very helpful in us as a county and the Health and Human Service Agency in meeting its federal requirements. The second contract is with the Haywood County Schools, and this is for the funding for public health nurses. We actually pay the schools to turn around and contract in part with the Health Department. This will provide some of the funding for the Health Department nurses that are public school nurses. There are other sources. We get some funding from the state for public health nurses, and then also the county directly through the Health and Human Service Agency picks up a larger percentage of the funding. So ultimately, it's mostly county dollars paying for the school nurses, either through the school contracting back with us or with the county directly providing those nurses to the schools.
Okay. Any questions of Ira on the two contracts?
Just a comment on the last one. I guess I didn't realize this, Superintendent, this is additional money other than what we allotted in the budget.
Yes, sir. This is the school contract back with us. We have both ways, but it covers all of them, yes. It is allotted in your budget, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's funding that benefits the schools, but it's outside of their normal appropriation.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay. Any questions on the consent agenda? If not, it would entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
So move?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We'll continue on with Ira Dove for the first item of new business, which is the renewal of lease agreement with the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Service. This is for our facility out at Raccoon Road.
Yes. This is a three-year lease that provides an office for the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Service out at the Ag Center. They pay us under the terms of the lease, but due to the length of the lease agreement, which is one of the attachments, they'll pay us for three years, and the annual lease payment is $2,145. We provide the other conditions under that lease to them.
Okay. Jim, you've had a chance to review that?
Yes, I have, and it's fairly routine, and it pretty much reflects past agreements we've had with them.
Okay. Any questions of Ira? If not, it would entertain a motion that the renewal of the lease agreement with the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services for their office space located at the Agricultural Services Center be renewed and approved.
So move? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the second item. Greg Schuping, our EMS Director, is with us. Morning, Greg.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm here to request approval for funding from the governing body for the annual firefighter competition and annual emergency services appreciation dinner. And both of these events started from the Commissioners about three years ago to show support for, number one, the firefighters' competition, which we term the Battle for the Bucket. It's held every year during the fair on that Thursday afternoon at 6:00 PM in the arena, and it promotes, you know, health and fitness, which is a challenge for firefighters. It also acknowledges their hard work and the things that they do, you know, in our communities every day. Last year, I think Waynesville Fire Department won the team competition for the Battle for the Bucket, so they're anxious to bring the bucket back and see who can get the bucket from them this year. On the appreciation dinner, it continues to grow every year. The annual event brought in over 200 folks last year from 30 different agencies. So when we say emergency services appreciation dinner, it's not just EMS or county agencies, you know, it includes over 30 agencies that help or support emergency services in Haywood County. So it's a chance for us, as the emergency responders in the community, to come together in a non-stressful environment and in an atmosphere where we can just fellowship together and spend a little bit of time with our families as well. So it's the responders, but also the families. So if you guys have any questions, we're just asking for that support again this year from the governing body.
Yeah, I attended the, Michael and I, I believe, both attended the dinner, and it was a very good affair. And I would encourage anyone who's never had the opportunity to see the firefighter competition at the fairgrounds to do so. You'll be amazed at the skill level required and the physical requirements that these drills and so forth require. So it really is quite entertaining, so. Anybody have any questions of Greg?
Have you set the date for the dinner?
The date for the dinner, I believe, is September 6th this year. We usually try to center that around September 11th, and I believe that was the focus of starting this three years ago during the 10th year anniversary of the September 11th attacks.
Yeah.
We usually try to do it on a Saturday. It just failed that night on this.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, then it would entertain a motion that the $500 for the competition and $2,500 for the dinner from the governing body line item be approved for the firefighter competition and for the appreciation dinner.
So move?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Greg. Okay. I'm going to move to the third item, which is an update on the Francis Farm landfill situation. The public will be hearing a lot about that over the coming months and years. It's quite a challenge that we face. We have with us today Mark Caffey, who's a project manager for McGill &amp; Associates, as well as Stephen King, our solid waste director. So, gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here today to discuss a little bit about the history on the compliance end for the unlined Francis Farm landfill, and also to discuss some of the issues that we're faced with. I have Mark Caffey with McGill &amp; Associates who's going to discuss some of the solutions for the problem. for the problems that we're facing out at this landfill. Give a little history. We own the Francis Farm Unlined Landfill, which was started in the early 70s and received its closure letter in 95. We quit, we kept, we quit accepting waste prior to that, but the closure letter was not finished until 95. As early as 96, basically a year after, rules changed that we had to follow and we were given new standards to actually go through and for the groundwater as well as the gas standards changed back in 93. Also, the, in essence, with this change, we had to pull groundwater samples, get them tested and looked at and see what was going on with the groundwater. In 97, we received a letter stating that the landfill was in exceedance of certain elements within the water, so we had to address that.
Stephen, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, sir.
Some people might not be familiar with NC Deaner as to what it actually is and the jurisdiction it has in this matter. Could you briefly identify that for us?
Sure, absolutely. North Carolina NC Deaner, North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources, the solid waste section actually has compliance over all the landfills within the state of North Carolina. And what they're doing here is their main job is to protect public health. And so they regulate things to that manner and anything that comes up, they're out there to address it. They act as an entity that we can ask questions to. So they're there to basically govern the operations of landfills, even closed-out landfills.
And they are the regulator that we answer to and in essence.
That is correct.
If they tell us that something has to be done, then.
Yes, sir.
We have to comply with that.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. Once we realized there was a problem going on with groundwater out there, prior to the next compliance letter, prior to 2000, Haywood County worked with the town of Waynesville to supply water taps or water to all the surrounding residents of the Francis Farm landfill. So in 2000, the water quality letter basically states that NC Deaner requested information that was originally requested in a later date to investigate and extend the groundwater problem. At the time, they were not aware that, I apologize. Sorry about that. At the time, they were not aware that we had actually extended water to the residents around there. So we went through and did that. They acknowledged that, they were very pleased with that, that we had done that. So also in this letter, knowledge of public water, there appears to be very little buffer between the waste boundaries and adjacent property within that. So keep in mind that after, while the landfill was in operation, after it was closed out, the rules changed on the gas and the water. So things were changing with that.
So we're required to have a buffer between the edge of our landfill and the waste that's in the landfill and other property owners. There has to be room in there between those.
Yes, sir. There should be some room in order to prevent the methane gas from migrating onto the adjacent property. So there is a buffer.
Stephen.
Buffer boundary. Yes, sir.
Another point probably that we need to make is while we were operating the landfill, we were doing it with the rules of Deaner in mind as we carried out the test of looking at the landfill. And then, in the closing, I guess the rules kind of changed on us.
Yes, yes, sir.
Because we didn't do a liner underneath the cap on top of all this, right?
That's correct. The 500 rules was what this landfill was governed by. The 1,600 rules was developed because of all the problems they were having with these type of landfills, which the Subtitle D landfill, which they put liners under the landfills. This landfill is unlined, the newer landfills are lined, there's a lot more regulations. You have to construct the landfills in order to prevent methane gas from migrating off the property line. We still have to comply to these rules, even though at the time, it was not said that we had to do that. So the new rules that come into place, we still have to follow them. In January of 2000, we actually received a letter indicating that the methane levels had exceeded the LAL, the lower explosive limits for that. Trying to explain a little bit about the methane gas here, North Carolina Solid Waste Management Rules 15A, NCAC 13B require quarterly monitoring of methane gas. We were doing the monitoring aspects out there. This is to ensure the gas did not exceed the lower explosive limit, which is the LAL at the facility property boundary, or 25% lower explosive limit at facility structures. Methane gas is a byproduct from landfills. The decomposition of the matter within the landfills with the anaerobic processes without oxygen will create methane. So it is a, is a place where methane is generated. The LAL, let me explain a little bit about the LAL aspect. LAL is basically dealing with the lower explosive limit for methane. 100% LAL is essentially 5% methane within the air and the 25% LAL is 1.25% methane in the air. So it's highly explosive. In January also is recommended that county work with licensed geologists in North Carolina who is familiar with the groundwater assessment as well as landfill gases. October of 2000, we were out of compliance, as was noted before, for the groundwater monitoring wells, which were on our property. And keep in mind too, at this point in time, we'd already put water out to the residents around the landfill to make sure they were okay. We were basically requested to do an assessment for the groundwater and the part here that kind of stands out is the current condition at the Francis Farm landfill is a violation of solid waste management rules and law, Title 15A, NCAC 13B. And the thing that really sticks out is failure to adequately address this situation at once may subject Haywood County to enforcement, including an administrative penalty. They have the authority and the ability to assess a fee or a fine to us for being out of compliance. We found out we're out of compliance in 96. It could be upwards of $15,000 a day. You can do the math, that's quite a bit of money. So we are required to make sure that we control the landfill gas. To date, Haywood County has not received any fines at Francis Farm landfill because every time that we see a situation, we're trying to address it and we're trying to come up with ways to figure out how to control the situation. In August 2004, a groundwater assessment plan was submitted to Deaner and they came back and asked for just a little bit more information. Haywood County requested additional information for the implementation of the plan. One of the problems that we had was we only had wells on our property at the time. So we're trying to work through that. In 2007, we started working with Benell Lemmons Engineering, BLE, and McGill &amp; Associates. McGill &amp; Associates was helping us out with White Oak landfill and master planning within the solid waste division. BLE was doing the assessment or actually taking in the samples and doing the reporting for us at that time. The semi-annual groundwater testing started with PACE. PACE Analytical had been pulling samples from both the landfills since the beginning of the landfills. So the testing had been pulled from that. BLE would take that information, starting in 2007, and they would analyze it and report stuff for us. 2009, Deaner sent a letter stating Haywood County had not submitted additional correspondence pertaining to 2004 groundwater assessment. We worked, we immediately contacted McGill and got McGill Associates involved with that situation to try to come up with a plan and we were working with BLE and McGill on that. Sites had been monitored for years and kind of hints the information on the other compliance issues, but we needed to come up with a better plan to assess what was going on with the 2009, we began work with adjacent property owners. We went out there and talked to them about installing groundwater wells, groundwater monitoring wells. And these are not drinking wells, these are groundwater monitoring wells. To install them so that we can go out there and test them to see the extent of the contaminants that were leaving our property. See, in '09, we have two issues that we're trying to deal with. In November of '09, we started dealing with, trying to work to do something with the gas. We're dealing with groundwater as well as methane gas, which is leaving the property. So two things we're trying to deal with at the same time require different wells and different things to address it. But we actually came up with a construction plan, which was submitted to Deaner for the gas collection combustion system. This is to help us to pull the methane back away from the property boundaries and to ensure the methane does not seep into the building structures around there, which is the bus garage. December '09, we actually submitted the groundwater proposal for the groundwater wells, where they'd be located, and Deaner was very receptive on that. Adjacent property owners had allowed us to go in there and actually install wells to figure out what was going on. March 17th, 2010, we were working on landfill gas energy facility construction, which was approved. We worked with McGill staff and to work through and actually receive a grant for about a million dollars for this project. So the large part of this project was grant-funded. This was helped, like I said earlier, to help develop a means to pull the landfill gas away from the property boundaries. 2010, we received another violation for methane, not complying with the permit and for exceedance of the property boundary. This is common for these landfills. If you've got waste right up next to the boundary, you're going to have problems with methane gas leaving the property. Again, we had not been fined anything because we're constantly trying to work with ways to address it. They knew that we had the landfill gas project going on to pull the methane away from the landfill, away from the property edges. August 2011, we were very proactive, as well as before, with putting water lines out to the residents. We were proactive with meeting with them and going around and measuring if they had wells on their property, we would pull samples from them. We hired PACE Analytical to pull samples, we hired BLE to analyze them. They went through and basically the results came back and said that the wells were not impacted from the landfill, which is very good news. So none of the problems had existed or went to the extent of the properties. August 20, I'm sorry, August 2011, we served, we had a violation for storage, bus garage, I'm sorry, the maintenance facility out there, they stored some material that should have been in a container. That was corrected right away and addressed. We shared that facility with the bus garage and the maintenance facility for the school 2012, ongoing corrective measures. The gas system helped us to work with methane, I'm sorry, the gas system helped us to work with the groundwater system as well. We were ready to put some extraction wells out there to pull the methane up into the flare and the gas system. At the same time, we put wells, we put pumps in the wells to pull the leachate of the groundwater out to be treated. To date, we've treated about one and a half million gallons of groundwater out of that landfill, went to the wastewater treatment facility, which has helped us out tremendously. The flare became operational during that year and about six months later, the waste energy project, which is the motor, became operational. So we were actually putting power back on the grid. 2014, the status of past violations and the exceedance of landfill gas. Failure to comply with conditions, I'm sorry, failure to comply with conditions of permit for gas remediation at property boundaries. These things still exist, we're still trying to deal with that. The state knows that we had the gas energy system in place, we're trying to pull the methane back. We're basically exhausting all means that we can to correct the problem at this time. So we're going through and trying to correct it. June of 2014, BLE submitted a groundwater assessment report to Deaner. Within this report, I kind of wanted to pull out a few things with this. We started back in '09 when they sent us the letter for this. We, we had 10 additional wells that were looked, that were installed. The sampling matrix had to be submitted and it was approved and so we started sampling. In August 2012, we approved six more wells, which we had to go through the whole process again, the sampling matrix, get them sampled. 2012, we installed eight more additional groundwater wells. 2013, one more additional groundwater well. To date, 2014, we have about 31 groundwater monitoring wells out on the, our property and adjacent properties out there to see the extent of what's going on. At this time, I want to say that the Francis Farm landfill, the problems that we have out there are not just isolated to Haywood County, it's basically all the landfills at this time, timeframe, they're having these issues with, which helped us to develop the Subtitle D landfill requirements, putting liners in there. So we're faced with something that other people are faced with. The difference here is that we have waste so close to the property that we have methane gas migrating off the property and we have water contaminants leaving the property as well. So at this time, I want to bring up Mark Caffey to discuss some of the solutions that we have for the Francis Farm landfill. Mark?
Thanks, Stephen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank the commissioners and for being, the opportunity to be here and staff for inviting me. And I want to be as brief as I can, but at the same time, be as lengthy as you want me to be. And so what I thought I would do, I believe you have a letter in your agenda packet, it's a letter actually to Chairman Swanger dated July 14th, 2014. Can you go over that letter?
Sure.
Okay. Basically, this letter precipitated from a meeting earlier in the spring to talk about the status of the Francis Farm landfill. And so really wanted to summarize where we are with the Francis Farm landfill and what we're facing at the Francis Farm landfill. So basically, the groundwater assessment, and Stephen has given you a great history of the NC Deaner correspondence and where we are regulatory-wise with Francis Farm landfill. So the groundwater assessment continues. We, per Section 1634, as Stephen mentioned, of the solid waste rules, that's North Carolina Administrative Code 13B that Stephen referenced. We are still assessing the limits of a contaminant plume from the Francis Farm landfill. That's what the series of wells require. We continue to move outward until we've, now we believe we have defined the vertical and horizontal limits of that plume. And so that last report was submitted to NC Deaner and we are now waiting on basically a ruling from them as to they concur that we have now defined that contaminant plume. So once that, once that is approved, then we would go forward into an ACM process, which is Assessment of Corrective Measures, which is also a specific process which is defined by the solid waste rules. Okay? So that's where we are with the groundwater assessment. We don't believe we have to install any more wells, but we still are waiting on their concurrence. As far as the landfill gas goes, we have, we went through an extensive assessment period where we took monthly monitoring of all the landfill gas probes, a couple of the groundwater wells, also all of the monitoring points within the facilities located at the landfill, the the bus garage. And we have now submitted that to N C Deaner, and we have not received any official correspondence back from N C Deaner as to what they want to do moving forward. However, in the meantime, as Stephen mentioned, we installed the landfill gas collection and combustion system. That's allowed us to see some relief at the landfill, but it has not resolved the situation. And that is in large part due to the cap that's on the landfill, the quality of the cap that's on the landfill now. The, we recently tested some of the, basically installed some shallow test holes at the landfill and determined, we basically have a predominantly sand material on top of the landfill. We all know sand does not do a very good job of deterring increasing runoff, and therefore water runs into the landfill cap. So, that is definitely going to be a challenge moving forward, but that's one of the things that I also want to talk about. So, basically, that's where we are on groundwater and landfill gas. As I mentioned, the next step was the Assessment of Corrective Measures, as defined by section sixteen thirty-five of the rules. They have a specific process. We basically have to go through all the potential corrective measures for the landfill. And we have to basically, from that, provide data and decide which one is the most prudent to perform here. We aren't sure exactly what that will result in, but we are confident that there's going to be a landfill cap component to this, based off the recent results that we had for the study in the landfill cap. So, therefore, we need, we're going to need a soil component. And concurrent to all of this occurring, we actually have an opportunity here that has presented itself to acquire some soil from a very close location in conjunction with the two oh nine project. And so, that's another thing. That is really, the material that's available there is from the borings that were provided to us from the D O T project. There appears to be some very good material there. Now, how well you segregate that material and get it to the Francis Farm landfill is another, is another matter, but that's one thing that we definitely need to consider because this opportunity, it's really a great opportunity for the county to save a lot of money. Regardless, you know, without this, you're probably hauling dirt, you know, who knows? You're going to have to buy a property and haul dirt, you know, a round trip of thirty miles if you haul it from the other landfill, from the Wolf facility. We've estimated previously, and again, it's an estimate, but as much as, you know, one point three five million to get the soil resources you need to the Francis Farm landfill. And in this case, we're looking at, you know, don't hold me to any exact figures, but approximately, you know, a million dollars that the county could save here by taking advantage of this opportunity that's presented itself with the, with the dirt available at the two oh nine project. After the, again, the A C M process will happen approximately over the next twelve to eighteen months. Again, it's defined process. They say we have to submit the plan, they have to review the plan, they have to then act on that, agree, concur with what we propose. After that, there's a selection of remedy, which is again, defined as section sixteen thirty-six of the rules. At the same time, they make us go through and evaluate each, each criteria that's, that they define has to be evaluated, provide them a report for their concurrence. And then, finally, there is also an implementation of corrective action, which is defined by section sixteen thirty-seven of the rules. So, it's, like I say, it's defined in the rules as to what steps we have to take. Now, that doesn't mean we can't take steps to, of corrective measure in the meantime. And that's, I believe, what we're proposing here is to take advantage of this opportunity for the dirt that's available at the two oh nine project. And also, mentioned in the letter quite specifically is, I felt it pertinent to bring up the fact that, you know, groundwater, buying property is not going to solve any groundwater issues. Okay? I want to make that clear. However, it can resolve some landfill gas issues. Okay? Along with a cap of which will eventually be proposed in some manner. Exactly what the cross section of that cap is, we don't know right now. It depends, again, on the quality of the material that we get. But we can definitely change the compliance of the landfill gas by considering purchase of additional property. The landfill waste limits are very close to some of the property lines. Again, that was not against the law at the time, when the, when the five hundred rules are in play, but, but now, it's, it's just not viable to be able to keep landfill gas on your property when you're very close to property lines. It's the bottom line. So, again, I wanted to be brief, that's basically where we are. We continue to look at the landfill gas, continue to look at the groundwater. I want to capitalize on this opportunity, want you to at least consider what, you know, potential of purchase properties that are adjacent to the landfill, particularly the ones where we're close to the land, the waste mass, but I want to answer any questions you might have.
How long would you guesstimate, how many years at the rate we're moving and with a commitment to do the right thing in terms of mitigating the damage that the county has caused inadvertently, but we're responsible for it? Where would the end game be? Where would, five years out, ten years out?
Well, well, I mean, of course, there's, there's never really an end game when you own a landfill. But theoretically, if we can resolve the issues that are, you know, facing us right now, we definitely will need to implement some corrective measures in the next two to three years, three to five years, it depends on how the process goes. But I would say that the county is in a much better situation three to five years down the road, you know, as we look at these groundwater and gas issues, and like you say, and, you know, attempt to do, do the right thing.
Right. Well, a new cap will alleviate some of the groundwater and gas issues because it'll shed water, is that the idea?
Most definitely. A new cap will help in two ways. Our landfill gas extraction system currently, we, we basically have a blower which puts a vacuum on our collection system. However, when you turn that vacuum up and you have a poor cap, what happens is you basically, you pull oxygen through the landfill cap. You don't want to pull oxygen through the landfill cap. When you do that, what happens is, you know, an anaerobic environment turns into an aerobic environment, and you can have landfill gas, you can have fires inside your facility. And so, that's, that's a no-no. So, therefore, when that oxygen starts rising, we have to turn the vacuum back down, and then, so the effectiveness of that existing system is, is minimal.
If you would describe the composition of the cap. I know there's plastic and, and a lot of dirt, but people have, you know, and I had trouble, you know, conceptualizing how much dirt we're talking about. If you could talk about that.
Right. Well, in a typical landfill cap, now, a subtitle D, which that's not what we have here, okay? I'm just explaining what a typical cap, you would have a soil component, and then you have a low perme, low permeable soil, a clay that's typically referred to, doesn't have to be a clay material, but has to have a certain permeability. You would have a clay, you would have then a synthetic geomembrane liner, a high density polyethylene liner typically, or PVC, there's other liners you can use. And then, there would be protective soil on top of that, okay? And then, also vegetative supportive soil on top of that. That would be your typical classic landfill cap section. In this case, and there's been a lot of studies shown, we're not required to do that typical landfill cap. What we need to do is to determine what's most cost effective and still effective for the county. So, what we're thinking on this would be, as part of the Assessment of Corrective Measures process, what we would do is determine, we would model the landfill cap, and there's software available by the EPA to do that. It's what we would do is look at the hydraulic evaluation of the landfill cap. What we think we can do is to put a synthetic liner, which is readily available, on the landfill cap, maybe avoid some of the typical cross sections, therefore reducing the amount of soil that you would need. If we did a typical landfill cap, we might have to have as much as a hundred and fifty thousand yards of material at this facility. What we hope to do is put a synthetic component in, utilize the soil that's there at the facility on top of the cap, and then put protective soil over that synthetic liner, and thereby reduce the amount of soil that we need. And the overall effectiveness is still being shown in previous studies and different, different reports and papers that I've seen presented at technical conferences have shown that the synthetic component is predominantly the most important. So, I think that's what we'd be shooting for here.
So, about a hundred thousand cubic yards?
Roughly a hundred thousand cubic yards is what we're estimating to reshape the cap and to install the protective cover over a synthetic component.
So, so, once the cap is in place, I just, what you're doing is starving the landfill from additional water?
Yes.
And it'll dry, over time, it'll dry out.
Right. You are basically cutting off the recharge so that it keeps the, you should reduce the amount of moisture in the landfill and also reduce the amount of water that's there to recharge and push any contaminant from the landfill.
Because that's what's happening, I can see.
Yeah. Once it comes in, it has to go somewhere, and then by doing that, it creates a head and pushes.
Mark, how big is the cap as far as surface area?
It's roughly twenty, roughly twenty acres. The entire facility's, is that right? Thirty-three, and I think the landfill cap itself was twenty.
And the thickness would be, with everything combined together, how thick would it be?
Well, in, typical section would be a sin, we would have to rework the existing surface, okay, to make sure that the settlement that we've had over time, we would make sure, we would spend some material to rework that surface. And then, you would have a synthetic liner and then two feet of cover over that. That's what we would propose to start with, assuming that we get good results from our hydraulic modeling, that's what we would look to do.
When you drive up there, you know, you've got that access road that goes to the bus garage. The scope of the cap, is the toe of that slope going to be past that road?
Yes, it would actually, let's see if we can see it there. Is there a pointer on here? I don't know if you can see it. Okay. Can we, can anybody?
I've got the picture up of the overhead.
Well, what I'm looking, this, this road here is the one you're referring to, Mr. Swanger, comes across the landfill cap. The actual cap is all the way down here at this property line down here. Okay? The actual waste limits. So, this road is actually on top of the landfill cap. So, the area we're talking about would actually encompass all this here, you know, all this area here. Well, some of this cuts through here, but that road, so if you ride into the, if you're going to the bus garage, what's below the road, you get in the straightaway, what's above and below the road is landfill. So, that would have to-
So, even where the buses are parked, they're going to have to go away?
Yes, definitely for a period of time.
We've been doing, you know, a lot of work over the last few years up there and incurring a lot of expenses. Fortunately, we were able to get a million dollar grant, that, that helped. But we've had to spend several hundred thousand dollars in addition, which has been in essence borrowed from the fund balance of the Solid Waste Fund. So, have to keep that in mind as we move, as we move forward.
And there's an opportunity here to get soil that's close that looks like it'd save one point three five million is what your rough estimate versus, I think I saw in their packet, three hundred to four hundred thousand.
Right. It's definitely-
If we could get it now, you know, it's kind of like an opportunity's presented itself, and we need to take advantage of it, be proactive.
Right. If, you know, had, had this opportunity not presented itself, we would not be looking for dirt until we've, you know, go through this A C M process. But this is actually, you know, we actually had Benell Lammens look at the dirt itself, and, you know, they were amazed that, you know, you know, this is a great, this is a great opportunity because it's good dirt and it's right next door, if you will, and so, yeah, definitely is going to be a component of the corrective measures in the future, particularly after this recent testing of the cap. It just, we have to have something on there.
And the proximity of the project to the landfill, so the haul bill is, even though it's substantial, but you're talking about many, many trips as well.
Right. Because, you know, just to put, just typically, just to put dirt in a truck and move it anywhere's, you know, significant money.
Yeah.
It looks, looks like that we'd just be paying haul bill. If we get the dirt, we're just paying the haul bill.
Basically, yes.
And then, of course, we're still, I mean, all this we're doing is, is up to the Deaner specifications, even though we're not a hundred percent sure whether exactly everything that they're going to need or want out there, but this should be pretty much in the direction that they want us to go.
Yes. I don't think we're making any wasted motion here because it's definitely leading to what N C Deaner will ultimately approve in some fashion, most definitely. I don't think there's a single wasted motion in what we're doing, proposing here.
Right. Okay.
I guess there's been other landfills in the state where they have done something similar?
Oh, yes. There's landfills everywhere that operated under the five hundred rules that, that had, now are having problems. I mean, it's just simply that other regulators and, you know, our society did not understand the impact that landfills were going to have, and, and now we're understanding.
Well, they started putting fill in there in the early seventies, and that's when you basically had your EPA created.
Right.
So, all this is new, and now it's, you know, it's forty years later, but it's something that we're having to deal with, unfortunately. It's like, it's like, it's like something that won't go away. You know, the landfill's still there, it's almost like if-
Yeah.
-we'd taken it out of the county, we wouldn't be dealing with this now, but we didn't. And we were being, I think we were trying to be, you know, proactive then in having a landfill to be able to-
Yeah, I think so. I think the decision makers back in those days, that was probably the-
Yeah, least expensive.
You know, the, the recommended course. It's just that the unforeseen circumstances, consequences, I mean, people used to, you know, either burn or trash or throw it in a creek.
I can remember doing that every Saturday. I mean, not throwing it in the creek, but burning it.
Yeah.
In a big barrel.
And, you know, you improve as time goes on, and you go to digging a hole and putting it in, it's called a landfill. Now, we have enough technology to know that that's not going to work. You've got to line it, and you've got to take several other steps, so. Okay. I think that will take us then into, and if y'all would stay close by, we may have more questions. The fourth item, which is the request of consideration of purchase of real property of the Shelton Living Trust, tract ten, pin number provided, deed and book page as well, off Farmview Road in Waynesville. I would explain, if you would, why we would consider this purchase.
We would consider this purchase primarily for the reasons stated earlier. We talked about, you heard from the engineers and from Stephen King, our solid waste director, about the issues that are going on with the landfill. You heard about the fact that there's gas migration on the properties. You've heard about the fact that the edge of waste is close to boundaries. You've heard about this road and how it's built over waste. The particular property we're talking about is right off of the back end of the garage where the school is built and wrapping around towards the open plain.
Yeah.
If I can get the- That's the timer. I just shut us down. And this, the piece of property we're talking about is back here, the Shelton, it's like five acre tract. The water, gas migration is coming off in these directions. So, this particular piece of property, while you would want to buy it to expand the boundaries of the property that you own, which would solve the gas migration issue we discussed to expand, and it would also solve the edge of waste close to the boundary issues. This particular property also has an easement over the cap of your landfill so that if you were to go ahead and do a lot of work on that landfill, this property owner could come back and exercise those easement options, and you would be in negotiations over that portion of making sure that no damage was done to your cap because they would have the right to exercise an easement over it to the property. Those are the reasons why you would want to acquire this property. The landowner, the purchase price, the reason that this purchase price is fair, when we reviewed it and discussed it with the landowner, the acreage that they have, it comes out to thirty-seven thousand dollars an acre, but that is what they paid for it back in two thousand and seven, from what we can see. There was a hundred thousand dollar deed of trust recorded, two hundred thousand dollar purchase price recorded with stamps on the purchase price. The price, or the property was then placed into a trust, so it looks like this person, you know, granted to themselves. It went into a living trust at a later date after- It went into a living trust at a later date after purchase. But the original purchase was for 200,000, which is the proposed price that would be paid for it. But my recommendation would be to go ahead and purchase this after reviewing the landfill. Nobody wants to come into a situation and start reviewing stuff and look at a landfill. And as the engineer said, you'll never get rid of the issues with the landfill. So what you have to do is create the larger buffer around this in the areas where you can predict there are going to be issues, and this is one of those. The other reason is that we're talking about a very large construction project, and this area can be used as a staging area for that construction project, a place to store dirt, a place to have the ability to go back, and then when you're putting the synthetic liner and, and other things, and you need to, you need an offsite place to have your equipment located while you're working on that cap. So this is, this is a lot of the reason we want to look at this.
So that's basically, this 100 square yards of, of soil can't be placed initially on top of the landfill, because you've got to put the cap and all on it, the synthetic cap. So you need a place to store that dirt until such time as it's ready to move to the landfill cap. Is that correct?
Yes, a portion of the dirt would be placed there for shaping, but the, the bulk of the dirt would need a place to be stored until your time is to go, go forward and in a very systematic way build the cap. That's my understanding of the project from talking to the engineers.
And if we don't store the dirt, we lose the dirt, because the state's going to get it moved off of that project to some other location.
Yes.
Okay.
I think you're supposed to start this month.
I think so, I think so. That's why, I mean, time is the essence, because they're going to start moving dirt probably. Now, Mark, do you have a date that I was on the impression is going to be sometime in the end of August?
Yes, it was, their start date was actually last week.
Okay.
And so they definitely, they have the state department, they're, they're, they heard it would come off.
Okay. And you had mentioned this would solve the issue of the encroachment. It would only solve a portion of that issue, because its other property would have to be acquired as we move forward in order to completely solve that issue. Is that right?
That is correct. It only solves it as to this piece of property in the boundary here. But you do have an encroachment issue from what we can tell in, on this area too, that it's, the waste buffer needs to be larger-
Okay.
-in the corner of this property.
So as Mark mentioned, there's no wasted motion or wasted effort here. This is a piece of property we would have to purchase anyway. If we purchase it now, it has a dual function in that it can be used to store the, the soil from the state and save the county about a million dollars.
We would save a lot of money, yes, moving ahead on this project.
Okay.
I mean, that's the, the reason the timetable has been pushed up a little bit.
Right, I understand. Okay, any questions on this property?
Just, just one. Will the cap, their allocate, I can't even get that out, in theory, help us not have to buy more property for buffers on in the future?
As to some, as to some, my, my understanding is if you build the cap on this backside, you might gain a lot of advantage, but I would defer to the engineers, on this backside by building the cap. But the plume goes out in that direction, the water plume, I believe, from what I've seen on the maps.
It's my understanding, all of these things that we're doing are interconnected-
That's correct.
-toward a, an eventual solution. And you really, it's hard to separate one piece of it from the other, because you've got to have the cap, or else the other things we're doing are, we're just marking time, because we're, we're still creating more gas and more, more water, and we're not solving anything.
Yes, sir, that is correct. That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
One thing also, there's a right of way across our property to this track, the land.
Right.
That's, that's right, going across.
That needs to be solved, yes.
Yes, sir.
And this will solve it if we purchase this property.
Like this is only right of way to the property.
Absolutely.
We've also, I mean, this particular piece of property you're talking about here, it's, it's adversely impacted that piece of property.
Yes.
Right. I mean, so you got, we've damaged somebody.
Right, right. Yeah, we have a responsibility here.
Mm-hmm.
Responsibility to, to fix what's been damaged and to prevent future environmental concerns.
When you talked about the potential of the other side over there, right now, that may not happen, providing what we're trying to do works. Is that what I understood?
Based on the proximity of the waste on, on portions of the landfill, it's going to be difficult not to acquire additional property, and this is one of them.
Right.
Other areas of the landfill, we may be able to install a cap, install additional monitoring in the future, and, and upgrade the gas system in conjunction with the cap, and then not have any issue, further issues.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then, Chip, you've looked at all these, the, everything seems to be in order in terms of a potential purchase?
Yes, we've, we have an option. We have a contract. We've exercised the option. We have a contract. We are working on the title examination right now as we speak.
Okay.
So we should be ready to close on the schedule that's been outlined.
So the motion would be that we exercise our option to purchase that property?
We've already done that. We have a contract, have we not, or?
It's to purchase the property and to pay for it, yes.
To close on the contract.
Okay.
Close in accordance with the contract.
Okay, then I would entertain that motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and proceed with that, with that purchase, take that to closing, and let me know when I'm needed for signatures.
Yes, sir.
And that motion would include the, the authorization for me to sign the closing documents on behalf of the cap.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, the fifth item is dealing with the hauling and the soil with the NHM Constructors LLC for hauling and site preparation at the property that we just approved to be purchased for cap maintenance. So I'll turn that over to Ira.
Yes. NHM received the winning bid for the 209 and near Paragon Parkway construction project, and it's to begin later this month. They'll be removing almost 250,000 cubic yards of dirt from that area. And we entered into negotiations, or discussions with them here and got some backup bids. And these would cover both getting the dirt to the property, also clearing, removing debris from the 5.7 acre, building up an area to support this, doing the erosion control. These are separate items that we were looking at. And so it's a hauling service contract along with a contract for some construction. We went out and also, since we knew what this was, just to get a, a price on some, some of what we were dealing with and try and come up with some comparative models. We received three, or contacted three other companies that might be able to deliver on that level of dirt. And their prices did not include the other construction portions of it. And those prices were just for the dirt uncompacted and dropped. One bid was $12.50 a cubic yard, dropped and placed where it needed to be. Another bid would have come out to 885,000 for the 100,000 cubic yards to be delivered. And one, one bid was for 600,000, but then an additional $12 a yard for placement and compaction of the dirt. So you're dealing with, and that, so it was 600,000 just material. This particular bid is 300,000. It's broken out, so that it would be about 300,000 for the hauling of the dirt to our site as opposed to the other designated site, plus building a road and erosion control and other incidentals. The building a road would be, the clearing and grubbing of debris, 46,200. Building a road, 8,400. Other erosion control measures, around $36,000. So the total we're looking at, we think if we had $390,000 to cover that in incidentals between the dirt is what we're looking at to get this done. A portion of that may be reimbursable from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. By saying portion, I think it was, we're in negotiations for about $28,000.
For the erosion control?
For the erosion control portion of it, because this is connected to a DOT project. So that's, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in savings, up to a million dollars probably by moving on this.
And some folks might wonder, why would this person, how can this person, this company do this so cheaply, so much more cheaply than others? And the reason is, they, they won the contract with DOT to, to, to move that dirt from the NC 209 construction project. So they've, they've got it, and they've got to do something with it. And so it turned out to be a win-win proposition.
This turned out to be a win-win proposition based on that DOT project. And that opportunity opened this up, and is why we were looking at the timetable. As was discussed by the engineer, we would have gone with a, a later timetable had that opportunity not arisen.
Okay. And you've taken a look at this as well, Chip?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just want to make a comment. You know, I'm fairly familiar with cost on grading and cost on hauling and very, I was very pleased with that number, especially from the rest of what the bids or, or information that you've got, because that is a very cheap way to get the dirt. And I said a little while ago about, you know, they're just basically paying the haul bill, and, you know, that's, it's probably a little less than haul bill. But anyway, it's a, it's really a, a good, a good price.
Yes. What we have are bids. What we're wanting is the permission to, with Chip and with yourself, enter into the, the contract and get those contract agreements drawn up. But what we have are the bids from this gentleman signed and read roll.
So we would need, if, if we, if we approve going forward, then we would, we would need to draw up a contract with more specificity with the grubbing charges and that sort of thing. Because if you look at the picture, you can see all these trees on this incline. You can't just pour dirt in around and among these trees. So the trees are going to have to be removed-
Yes.
...to create a suitable location for the, the storage without contaminating the dirt that, that we have hauled to our site.
And to keep it from collapsing. I mean, the, the visual that's hard to wrap your mind around is when you're talking about spreading two feet of dirt across 20 acres, when you can pack that into a much smaller space, it becomes a very, very large amount of dirt.
Right.
And the, the construction company wanted to control the grubbing and control the soil and erosion and the other things before they placed the dirt. So that's, that's why it's a combined situation.
And the one final thing before we entertain a motion, the school system, Haywood County Schools owns this bus garage, and they actually own a portion of the property on the landfill and adjacent to it that we're talking about. Is that right?
Yes. The Haywood County Schools was granted some of this property, which makes them, and we were in discussions, but that is, they own it, so.
And so you have made contact with Dr. Garrett and discussed, discussed this, and it will be taking this matter to their board, you know, to, till everybody's on the same page?
We have had a meeting with Dr. Garrett and with the school system over this very recently, because again, our timetable got pushed up when we got the availability of the dirt. But we have met with her and explained that, that the school, I mean, because they own it, they own the landfill and are, and would have responsibilities like we would with regards to remediating this. But we explained that the county would be remedying this. We would need their permission and cooperation in doing so.
Right. I'm sure they'll be cooperative.
So they, and they were. Dr. Dr. Garrett and her team were very understanding, and we worked very well with the discussions and had a, a good conversations.
Okay. Okay, if there are no further questions, then we'd entertain a motion to, to accept the, the bid for the haul of $300,000 and enter into contract with NHM Constructors, Constructors LLC for additional site preparation costs, which we'll determine through negotiation with them and enter into a contract. Chip, is that good?
Yes, sir, I think so. I, I don't know, Mark, are you going to be involved with preparation contract with me? Or is this, yes. We'll come up with something for consideration.
Okay. So entertain that motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Ira.
Thank you.
We will bring Julie back to pay for this.
I have a couple of budget amendments for you to explain where the money is coming from to pay for these two projects. The first one is the 200,000 from the property purchase. This is going to be from the fund balance in the solid waste management fund. Currently, there's about $3 million sitting in that fund. So we had already appropriated 624,000 this year for some equipment at the solid waste management area. But we're going to add the 200,000 to bring it up to 824,000. And then after you prove that, if you will, I'll tell you the next budget amendment.
If there are no questions, we'd entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Julie?
The next budget amendment appropriates the 300,000 for the haul contract to bring the dirt onto the property that we are planning on purchasing. I've also included $90,000 as an estimate for all the other work that's going to be done regarding erosion control and all, and the, the mounting and that type of thing. This also is coming from fund balance in the solid waste management fund. It's going to bring the total appropriated fund balance of $1,214,428 for the current fiscal year.
There are no questions, we entertain that motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And I'm sure we're keeping a running tally of how much we borrow from ourselves here on this fund balance, so. Okay, any other business?
I guess just one comment. We, we have known for a long time we're going to have to spend money on this project. I, I hope we can see an end, because I can, you know, you can see it ongoing. If we don't solve it now, we'll be buying a lot more property as far as buffer zone.
Yeah. I mean, when, when we're all said and done, and I've mentioned this before, it's going to be in the several millions of dollars. I've heard various estimates, but none lower than 5 million and some higher than that. So it just is what it is. I mean, we have to correct it. We have a responsibility to, to correct it. It's the right thing to do, and I'm sorry that technology was such that we're in this situation, not of our making, but it's our responsibility to fix it.
And we need to be good neighbors.
And that's right, that's right. So, any other business? Ira, anything? Chip?
First.
Julie? Okay, if there's no further business, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.